Okay, it's about that time. We want to welcome everyone to our Board of Education Workshop. It's good to see you, it's a beautiful day, and here we go. We're going to start tonight by having our Pledge of Allegiance by our Board Vice President Emily Price.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, want to mention that we are minus Ms. Kristin Hoken tonight, so we're going to miss her. She is on her way out of town. Okay, we're excited about what we're going to learn about tonight. In our area of parents and community connections, we are going to hear from our Technology Director, Information Technology Director, and that's Mr. Brett Singleton, and we'll ask Mr. Singleton to come up and introduce those helping him tonight.
Well, good afternoon, President Gerard, Vice President Price, members of the School Board, Superintendent Tim. Thanks for the opportunity to share some key highlights about MyDSD this afternoon. So first I have David Williams, he is our Director of Information Systems. Tyler Bradovich is our Lead Analyst over our Student Information System that does MyDSD and handles all our student data. And then we have Ted Frosland, who is our Software Development Manager. So I have a lot of help, there's a lot of brain power up here with me, so pretty lucky to have them. Also Tyler recently won the Best of Davis Award, so it's awesome to have him with us as well.
Yes, congratulations.
So, let's see. So first we wanted to highlight MyDSD this afternoon for a couple of reasons. First, with several new board members, we just wanted to ensure that you're familiar with all the different features and tools that are available in MyDSD, and get any feedback that you guys might have from either your experience or any of your constituents. So secondly, we wanted to present this information because the State Board of Education has started preliminary exploration into mandating a statewide SIS and Student Information System, sorry. And we really feel like our Student Information System that we use here in the district, it's customized to the programs we use, and we feel like it's really awesome and effective for us, and we think that MyDSD is really the best parent-student portal out there the money can buy. So we want to start by just going over a little bit of by the numbers, so to speak. And so we just pulled up May of this year, and it kind of drops off after school gets out, but if you look notably on the last day of school there, it jumps up to almost 80,000 unique visitors. And if we look at the next slide, it's, that turns into almost 450,000 pages generated through MyDSD. On this one, we just wanted to point out a little bit of this shows how our users are accessing MyDSD. And the graphic on the right, you'll see that a majority of our users are using mobile devices to access the platform. And when we rewrote MyDSD about 10 years ago, we did so with a mobile-first mentality, meaning that as we developed it, we developed all the screens with the layouts and that to be used on a mobile phone, because we knew that that's where our students, especially in our parents, were going to be accessing it. So as the MyDSD usage has grown over the years, it's, so is its role in the daily lives of our families and students. So several years ago, we would have been able to, when we pushed out a deployment or wanted to do maintenance on MyDSD, we could take the system down midnight, 1:00 in the morning, and with really no impact. Well, a few years ago, we decided to allow students to change their passwords, secondary students. That made their passwords more secure, and we pushed that functionality out about 2:00 in the morning, and within 15 minutes, we had several dozen students who'd already got on and changed their passwords. So it really has turned into a 24/7 system. So the last slide that I'm going to go over real quick, it just shows a little bit of the different components of MyDSD that are being used. So you can see the first one is the survey system, which is primarily, it's Evaluate Davis, which is the parent and student survey of teachers. And Dr. Wilkie's team at Assessments done a lot of good there to help streamline the surveys, make them a little more compact, and his team's also done a lot to send out reminders and that to help up our return rate. But we've got a lot of surveys. A couple of years ago, we introduced course requests in MyDSD, and this has been a big one. So prior to this, counselors would either meet with students one-on-one, and they had either an online system that was pretty old and antiquated that they could put data in, or they would send home a little spreadsheet or a little worksheet for the students to put in their course requests by hand. And bless those counselors and registrars that had to look at my kid's handwriting and try and distinguish what they were saying. But they had to go through and interpret the kid's handwriting, and then hand under all those course requests into our Student Information System. And that obviously was very time-consuming, it lent itself to a lot of data entry errors. And so moving this online has saved a lot of hours, and the system has a lot of built-in validation that helps kids ensure that they can only request courses that are valid for them, looks at prerequisites, all those kinds of things. So the next thing up here, document sign, so this includes a lot of course requen, or, excuse me, course disclosures, acceptable use agreements, field trip permission slips. And so managing all those on paper would be a logistical nightmare, as well as the cost of trying to shuffle all that paper around. And so we also had a lot of absences cleared, and allowing the parents to do that through MyDSD saves a ton of phone calls to the attendance secretaries, allowing them to focus on the kids that have, need more time and attention for support. So I'm going to turn over, Mr. Bradovich is going to talk a little bit more about some of the features, the other features.
Yeah, I'll just go over these quickly. So these are some of the core features in MyDSD. There's, you know, dozens more that you may not even see as you log into MyDSD. Some of the pages we only show when they're applicable. For example, if you have indicated that you work on a federal property, we have a feature through MyDSD to confirm that, so that we can get the federal ImpactAid funding. Once we moved that into MyDSD, we saw a big jump in the return rate and how much federal funding we could get for that. Went from somewhere around 65% of the papers returned to around 85% to complete that through MyDSD now. But otherwise, yeah, you log into MyDSD, we show notifications, applicable to use as a student or guardian, surveys you have to take, appointments, documents to sign, anything that comes up like that. On the Student Information, we display the lunch balances, school, links out to the school webpages, all sorts of convenient links like that. On the Student Schedule, just a quick glance of your current classes, the grades for that class, current grades and then finalized grades. Class scores just digs into more detail there for your current scores. And then importantly, the missing scores provides a quick place for you as a student or guardian to view all the missing assignments, so you can focus on turning those in, see all of those across all your classes. You have attendance, we have all that info, including the ability to excuse absences through MyDSD for the parents, excuse me. Reports, several reports, we have some screenshots on the next page I'll show you, but, you know, including the transcripts, report cards, test results, all those. We have some other pages, I'll skip over that a little bit, course requests, Brett talked about. Payments, it's really nice through MyDSD. As a parent myself, can, if I get an email that yearbooks are ready to pay for, I just click a link on my phone and like 30 seconds, I have it paid. Don't have to go sign up anywhere or enter payment details, that's just saved to my ACH account and makes it easy. Yep, random tools too, I won't get into those now, but several, several other things that have come up over the years that we've been able to add into MyDSD, integrate into Encore for the employees, and works out really well. And Contacts page has been useful for students and guardians as well to view, you know, your school contact info, emails, phone numbers, counselor info, to have that all right there, really handy. And then we have a Resources page as well to display links to, helpful links to students and guardians. So yeah, these are just a couple of screenshots here. One of those features in MyDSD are the, you can view your special education documents for students in Special Ed right in MyDSD. So here's an example of a student, and track all that weekly progress, or all the progress reports, all of those documents. Here's a picture of the Course Requests page, and somebody's course requests that eventually get scheduled. Didn't mention it yet, there's also a light theme in MyDSD for those of us that like the light theme. And here's an example of the Student Graduation Summary, that's new in MyDSD this year. Improved that experience to see if you're on track for graduation, highlighting any areas to focus on, like a missing civics test, all your credits, et cetera. Yeah, and that, this is continuation of that graduation summary report. Yeah, and I'll turn it to Dave.
That's one of our newer features too, right, the Graduation Summary? The, as Tyler was kind of enumerating the many features of MyDSD, it was interesting, as we were preparing for this presentation, I went through the site again, and I started going through everything, and like we were, you know, writing it all down and preparing. Even I was a little staggered with how much it has grown over the last, the last 20 years. This has been, this has been kind of our baby for a long time, and we're really proud of what we've accomplished with it, and, and, and some of the things to come, and that's what I'm here to talk about now. On our roadmap for the future, one of the most common pain points we hear from parents and students and teachers is the delay between Canvas and MyDSD. I'm guessing that probably some of you, if not all of you, have heard the same.
Yep.
It's an excuse kids really like to use. They'll be disappointed if you fix this.
Yes.
And as parents will be happy.
Will be so happy.
Yes, yes. Yeah, it's been such a widespread issue that it's even become a subject in memes and social media, often about missing assignments that haven't been yet graded, right?
Right.
So it sounds like everybody's very familiar with that problem. And so are we, and it's something that we've been working really hard to try and tackle. One of the challenges with keeping MyDSD and Canvas in sync is the volume of data. There were over 20 million assignments scored in Canvas last year. When combined with updating scores possibly multiple times, this is a lot of data to move between two disparate systems. Last year, we made a significant improvement to our Canvas sync process. Previously, teachers could choose to sync their, their class data, or, or they could, they could do it manually, or they could set it up so they would do it nightly. And then just this last year, we, we decided to just sync it automatically, no matter what. And that, that really helped with moving, moving all of the data all the time. However, the sync process often didn't complete until early the next morning, meaning that MyDSD could still lag 12 to 24 hours behind Canvas. And this is where we're starting to hear that still, that continued frustration and, and confusion a lot of times. So for the upcoming school year, and that's what Tyler and his team are working on right now, we're taking a major step forward implementing a real-time syncing from Canvas. As soon as a student signs into MyDSD, their data will be updated instantly. This enhancement will significantly improve the user experience and might even save a few students from getting grounded for homework that they've already turned in. At least that's what we hope.
Or, yeah.
Ground a few that needed to be grounded.
Yeah, or, yeah, or that, yeah.
Eliminate the excuse.
So, yeah, and that will, that's, that's kind of our top priority right now, that's what we're working on to, to enhance in MyDSD. Some of our other upcoming things that we're, that we're looking at are PTA enrollment, where parents will be able to enroll in PTA through MyDSD.
That's great.
We're going to, we're working on displaying A/B days and links to bell schedules and calendars through MyDSD, as MyDSD is the primary platform where parents and students interact with our system on a daily basis. While our district website is a valuable resource for some of that information, MyDSD is designed to serve as a centralized hub, allowing families to quickly access everything they need for the school day in one convenient location. Our goal is to make it as easy as possible for parents and students to stay informed, connected, and supported, all in one, one spot. As our district population continues to diversify, we're also expanding language support within MyDSD. Currently, our platform supports English and Spanish, and we are beginning work, the platform's ready to do it, we just have to get the translations done, and we will begin supporting Portuguese, Marshallese, and Chukies, which are our three top languages in the.
What was the third one?
Chukies.
Oh.
Which is also a region in Micronesia.
Okay.
So, and I was kind of, when we, when we were told that, I, I had to go look it up, because I didn't even know, so. But apparently we have a large constituency there, so, in our, in our district, so. Part of our ongoing commitment to data security and user trust, we are preparing to implement multi-factor authentication for guardian accounts in MyDSD. This enhancement will add an extra layer of protection to sensitive student information by requiring guardians to verify their identity through a second method, such as like a text message, or an email code, or even an authenticator app. Let's see. Oh, with increased, with increased sophistication of cyber threats, multi-factor authentication, or MFA is what we refer to it, is widely adopted, best practices that significantly reduce the risk of unauthorized access, even if a password gets compromised. And then, and then a little further down the road, but also very important to us, we're working on student registration, where a guardian can, can go into MyDSD and actually, even if they're brand-new to the neighborhood, they will have all of their registration tools and forms and everything through MyDSD, and they can actually do it as a digital process. And we kind of have that mapped out, and again, it's in the preliminary stages, and we're working on that too, but. All right, then moving on, do I just go forward? Talking a little bit about the strengths and challenges of MyDSD, we've highlighted many of the features that set MyDSD apart from other parent and student portals. But what truly makes this possible is that MyDSD is developed entirely in-house and fully integrated with our district systems. This gives us complete control and flexibility to customize the platform based on the evolving needs of our schools and families. As district programs shift and priorities change, we can quickly adapt MyDSD to support new initiatives and deliver meaningful value to our users. MyDSD streamlines the user experience by making essential tools and information easily accessible in a single-user friendly platform. As we've discussed, one of our biggest ongoing challenges has been keeping data in sync between Canvas and MyDSD. Feedback from parents, teachers, administrators, and suggestions submitted through MyDSD consistently point to this as a major pain point. Over the past spring and summer, we've made significant progress in addressing this issue. Our current plan to implement real-time data syncing when students log into MyDSD represents a major step forward, and we're confident this enhancement will resolve the mismatch between platforms and greatly improve the experience for all of our users. There's some recent requested features in MyDSD from our students, and I'm happy to say that we're adding links to bell schedules, making the grades update faster. And honestly, this is again, one of the, one of the best parts of what we do, is that we can be responsive and we can take feedback and, and, and respond quickly. Just, just for fun, we grabbed some of them, these are, these are actual, actual.
Yes, longer recess.
Recommendations from, from students, feedback that we get through MyDSD, a longer recess, and that's how they spelled it, we left it, because we thought it was funny.
That's awesome.
But, and some of them are like, anyway, they can be really humorous, and sometimes a little offensive, but, but anyway, we just thought we would share a little bit of those with you so you can see. And from there, I guess now we can ask you if there's any questions.
Board, do you have any questions? Okay, Joni, Ms. Stevens first, and then Ms. Price.
I just, first of all, thank you so much. I feel like this is just an incredible resource that we have, that we just kind of take for granted, that it's part of our school district, and it is so user-friendly, it is really intuitive. I just, I spend a lot of time on it, doing all of those things with my children, and really appreciate it, that as I've served on PTA, we have sometimes said, why can't our nationwide PTA create a system like MyDSD that we can utilize? Because I think there's so many great things, but I do also remember it being an app. Is there any talk about it being an app again?
So, yeah, so, so part of the reason that we kind of did away with the app was, one, it was an extra set of code to try and maintain, and just our resources are pretty thin. And then the fact that we really did build MyDSD to be mobile-friendly, so we, we kept it with just, we felt like our time would be better spent just focusing just on one code base and maintaining the website version.
And there were some logistical issues as well, like at first when we were looking into doing payments through the app, you know, Apple wanted their cut.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Anyway, some of that stuff could have been worked out, but, and there were just a lot of obstacles there, and we, we thought by moving it to a pure web platform, and we, Tyler, you might mention what we did recently for that.
Yeah, if you scroll down to the bottom of MyDSD, there's now an Add to Home screen feature that should help a little bit, it'll make it feel a little bit more like an app, and you'll get the shortcut on your homepage and everything too.
Okay. Well, great work, and also you mentioned that there might be a state, there's maybe a statewide push for a statewide system? Is that coming from the legislature?
That was coming from USBE, and so they, they've started looking into that. And again, we feel like our SIS in MyDSD is pretty top-notch, and so we'd really like to keep our own system and maintain that, so.
If you do have experience in, in, from a different school district or whatever, you probably know that if you're a guardian, you, you look at your students' grades in one system, and you go to pay your fees in another system, and maybe attendance might be a third system. So we're pretty lucky that we're able to corral it all into one thing, and guardians aren't people looking for all of that.
Yeah, it is really great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Price.
Okay, I still use the app.
What?
I've got it on my phone, I just pulled it up.
It's a secret.
You can't do everything on the app, but.
Right, yeah, so there is limited functionality, and, and really, there's not a way first to go and pull the app back from everybody's phone, but, yeah.
You've kept your phone for a long time.
The secret's now.
All the new functionality is just on the website.
I've just had a kid in DSD for more than 15 years, so.
It's about this time of year where we, we often have the conversation of should we just turn off services for the app? And we're like, hmm, we're, we're too afraid.
Okay, no, so I am wondering, well, first of all, thank you, because I do love MyDSD and use it too, unfortunately, it's usually for attendance, but I'm glad that I know where I can go real fast to, to take care of that. But I don't know if this is something that could be done, because you guys, I noticed on the presentation, you know, you were asking for, are there any suggestions? Is it possible to have, because you know, you can go to MyDSD when you go to your student, and specifically students that have graduated, where you can see their transcripts, I guess you can see a current student transcripts as well. Is the way to request, like official transcripts from the school, or like diplomas from the school district, is it the same at every school? Like is it kind of like a, a universal process? Because I know you have to go through a different website, it's not through DSD, but like, I guess, is there a way to put the information on how to request transcripts? I didn't know I needed this until I had to request transcripts for one of my kids for Utah State, and I didn't know how to do it, and I think I went to MyDSD and tried to do it, but then I had to call the school, and I think I had to call the university. So anyway, is that like a university thing, where they have a specific way that they want transcripts, or do we send it, I don't know, is my question making sense?
Yeah, I, I think it probably is a little bit different from each university, whether they want you to send it. I think a lot of them just request it themselves, so it probably does go through the university, but we could look into if there's something that's pretty common, and we could put that information.
Okay, and I don't know, like if it's too much information, and it's not some standard that maybe every university, or at least like Utah universities use, then maybe it's not worth the hassle, but anyway, just a thought. And then another question, so how long will students and parents have access to MyDSD after graduation?
Yeah, for students, it's now one year after they graduate, so they have that year to pull any transcripts, grades they want. For guardians, it's in there for, it's going to be at least seven years after graduation.
Okay.
The guardian could access that, limited in the transcripts.
Okay, and I wonder if it, if it is possible maybe for students to have access maybe a little bit longer, just because you do have a lot of students that they don't go straight to, like they'll go and serve a mission, or military, or whatever it may be, and so a couple of years later, they have to come back and access, and if they don't have access, I don't know, I don't know if it's possible to have more time, but.
We could extend that to, say, three years.
Yeah.
Pretty reasonable.
But I mean, if there's, if there's issues with that, then I would certainly understand that too, but.
I think that's something we could do.
Okay, well, thanks you guys, I, great presentation, and I really appreciate all of the additional options, and then what's in the works too. It's very, very helpful as a parent.
Okay, Ms. Mercer?
I also want to thank you for this app, it's fabulous, and even just yesterday, I have a child that just got their driver's license, and I needed a copy of their report card, and I sat there with my phone and had it to them in five seconds, it was so fast and easy, and that would have been time that would have required calling an office and talking to a secretary and taking that secretary's time, so I'm grateful that I was able to do that on my own and not needing assistance to do that. I just wanted to say that we had a sort of discussion in regards to just encouraging, I, I think that we probably have a bias as a board as people who spend a disproportionate amount of time on MyDSD. And I'd love to get other parents, the parents that maybe want to be able to help their students, but, but are facing. And I'd love to get other parents, the parents that maybe want to be able to help their students but are facing just entry challenges. And so just wanted to share the idea with the board of, Mr. Sinclair and I talked about doing the Singleton, sorry. It's been a long day, and it's not that late yet. The, of having, putting together like a mock or a blank example of my DSD, and having that available at like back-to-school nights for a PTA or someone to have a table at back-to-school night where you could say, "Here, come and sit down with me, and I'll answer your questions as best I can about following up on your students' grades and helping your student know how to interact." And that's especially exciting with having Spanish available, and then with martial-ees and chukies available. That would be phenomenal to have, hopefully, people show how to get those involved. So I'm going to follow up on that, and we'll follow up on having that available. And maybe we can connect with our PTAs to get people in the schools with families to just get those late adapters. Do we, do, I know that you showed numbers. Do you know what percentage of, and parents look at my DSD?
I don't know that off the top of my head. We can look. It's pretty high.
Yeah.
But I can, I could probably get those.
Well, I think those, probably those later adopters are the ones that could possibly use the most help with that, and it would be the most beneficial. So I'm excited about having that possibility of helping our families access that information. So, thank you.
I think that would be, that is such a great idea to go to the back-to-school nights for those that are still doing that, and I would encourage that. And then we're going to have a community night in January, so we would love to have you be there to answer questions on this at that community night as well. So, any more questions? Ms. Barber?
I love it. I think it's awesome. Thanks for all the updates. Can you remind me how they're going to access the bell schedule specifically in the A-Day, B-Day? Will that be like on the home screen? What do you use?
Yeah, we plan on the schedule page, there'll be a little link at the bottom saying "bell schedule slash calendar", and that'll bring up a pop-up that shows links to your specific school's bell schedules.
Gotcha.
Just those PDFs they maintain.
Oh, okay.
And then also a little calendar that shows the A. and B-Day, tying that back to which classes and...
It would just be nice if they could sign in, and at the top, it's like, "Today is an A-Day."
Yeah.
"Go to school at 8:35" or whatever time.
Is it, so are you saying it's on the students', like, the homepage, like?
Just like that.
That?
But they have to scroll to the bottom.
When you sign in and you go to that student?
Yeah, go to that specific student. That's where we plan to go.
That's where their school information would be?
The goal was to, but whether it's an A-Day or B-Day, there wasn't a...
Yeah.
That's really helpful. That's probably the thing that I look at most often outside of my DSD is, you know, "Where's my kid right now?"
Yeah, bell schedule.
That would, like I said, it would just be nice, because I'm sure they're just going to want to sign in and just see, "This is your day today," or "You have to pick up your kid early today because it's early out," or whatever. So, anyway. I know the home state, homepage real estate is valuable, but that would be really nice to have right there. And then I've always wondered this question, and I'm sure there's a reason. So paying for lunch, for school lunch, you always, you go in and you put money in, and then the kid can just go to lunch for however many days they have money for. Is there ever a way that it could just work, that I could say, "Anytime they go eat lunch, just charge my card every single time, so I don't have to go put money in, they just bill it every single time?" I know that's probably, there's probably a reason not, but I've always wanted that feature.
That's something we could look into. Yeah, not come up to me yet.
I wonder if it's like a way of parents monitoring, like, how much their kids eat at lunch, or, and I maybe have to be sensitive to that, but some of us that could just say, like, "Anytime they go, charge my card."
Yeah, so with a credit card, we specifically don't store a credit card in our system for PCI purposes, but those that had like an ACH account, that's something we could look into.
Just say, "Anytime," and then they don't have to go in and put money in, and then get notified it's low, and then go put it in. So, anyway, put that on your list. Thank you.
That's why we're here.
I love it. I love it.
Okay, Ms. Powell?
Yeah, so my understanding, too, was from the agenda, you guys kind of wanted some ideas. Any thoughts? So, and actually, some of my thoughts you already had. You were like, "Oh, we're planning on doing this." I'm like, "Yay." So, I love the bell schedule idea, and I just discovered the graduation summary myself. I didn't know about it. And I was working through one of my kids' schedules, and I thought, "This is fantastic." So I don't have to meet with my counselor necessarily, like, every single time I have a question. Like, I love that, so thank you so much. And we need to spread the word, because I think other parents would love that, too. I, one thought I had, so maybe in the attendance, I know it's categorized in my DSD under academics. Me, when I'm looking for it, I don't think academics normally, I mean, I've spent over 10 years doing, looking at my DSD, so I do know now. But, but the first few years, I was like, "Oh, I think it'd be nice to just have attendance separate, because that's something you hit all the time in my DSD, at least I do, unfortunately." Anyway, just a thought, if we could do that in a separate category from academics. But I don't know if there's other reasons to keep it in there. And also, if you could have like a one-click text to say, "Oh, I approve this thing," that would be fantastic, because I know we have, we get emails and texts, and they're like, "Okay, you click on it, but then you got to log in and find where it is." And, but if you just have a one-click thing, I think you'd get a lot of response.
Or like, reply "yes" to approve or something?
Or just something that would be automated for that.
That'd be awesome.
Do you, via on your phone or on a laptop?
I usually use my phone, almost all the time.
Because I was going to say, I get the, like, the notifications. That's where I do the attendance.
Yeah, that's where I do attendance, too, is notifications.
So I don't even know that it's under academics.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Yeah. Well, for me, that's the way I look at it, when I just log into my DSD, or I'll get an email or a text, and then it says, "Click on this link," but it just takes me to my DSD, and then I have to log in and everything and find it.
I think we could improve that by having the link that's sent out in those emails go directly to that approval.
Yeah, like without a login, like, same with missing assignments. I get a link, and then I got to go into my DSD, and I'm like, "Okay, which kid is this?" Multiple kids. If you could just open it up without me having to log in, if that's possible, that'd be fantastic.
Yeah, so for part of it, you can click a little box to keep yourself logged in. So if it's, you know, your personal device, like your phone or whatever, you could do that.
Right.
The link will always have you logged in. And then we could, as Tyler mentioned, we could certainly update maybe some of those links so it takes you for the missing students right to that student's missing.
Right. Oh, that'd be awesome. That would be awesome.
I think one of the points there, too, is that this kind of feedback is really valuable for us, because as we were saying, we can make those adjustments, we just need to know about it.
Right. Is there, is there some way we could maybe routinely get some feedback, maybe from community councils or something about my DSD? Are we, have we started soliciting that, or, I don't know, just a thought? Because I know, well, most of us have kids in the schools, so that's the only reason I know, but, or have feedback on this. But I think that'd be great if we could talk to community councils, people who are working on it all the time. And you probably don't need everybody to give feedback. There'd be a lot of feedback, but I'm sure a lot of it is the same. PTA enrollment, for me, I already, when I go to pay my fees, it just automatically enrolls me in PTA, so is this a different?
That's gone now. They're not allowed to do that?
Oh, is that? Oh, okay.
That's why the process is a little bit different.
Oh, okay. So is that a recent legislative change?
No. It's not, it's not a legis, it's a PTA change, isn't it?
Yes, state PTA.
Oh, okay.
The way that they're audited, it wasn't...
Julie, it came from not commingling funds between the district and the PTA.
Oh, okay.
So when we were collecting their money, we were commingling money between us, and that's why they got out of that.
And we are the last district in the state to do that, or PTA was the last district in the state to switch out of doing that.
Oh, okay, okay.
So it's just been this last year.
Okay. And then just a couple other things. So if, I love the idea of, like, at the beginning of the school year, when your kid gets your schedule, especially in junior high, when there's so many different things, I love the idea A-Day versus B-Day. And my junior high recently added room numbers to the schedule. Do they do that universally now? Because that was super helpful, to add the room numbers. Okay. And then also, like, I don't know if you can link a school map so they know where the building is?
I think that's a security issue.
Yeah, or is that a security issue? That was my other question.
Because they don't publish them on the websites.
Some, some schools do. At least I've seen.
We'd have to look into that. I don't know.
I guess if they're all parents and students, it'd be okay.
Or you could just, just at the beginning of the school year, when you're figuring out your schedule, maybe link to it, and then you can take it off for security reasons if that's an issue.
If it's only available if you were assigned in as a student or Guardian.
Just a thought, just because, and it's been, if we want to put everything in place and make it a one-click thing, that would be super helpful. And then my other question, my last question, was on the state board level. Do you know the rationale behind why they're, why the push is to standardize? Was that because some other school districts had some security issues?
I don't know that it was security. I think it's them trying to manage the data coming in from all the different LEAs. And so there's diff, you know, everybody has their own SIS. And the state does have, basically, they have a requirement of, "You need to send us the data in this format."
Right.
And because we customize everything ourselves, that's a no-brainer for us. Like, we can do that pretty easily, but I don't know if some of the other LEAs, when the state makes a change, if that's a challenge for them, then to get their data formatted and pull out of their SIS to do it.
So it's like a data collection analysis type of thing? Okay. Okay. Thank you so much. I really appreciate all the stuff you guys are doing. Love these ideas you guys have. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for the feedback. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for coming and presenting, all three of you. You make a great team, and we just so appreciate everything you do. This was very enlightening and very interesting and very helpful. And I don't know if you were expecting this much feedback, but thank you for listening to the feedback. You know, one of our goals and part of our vision in Davis School District for many years has been to strengthen our parent and community connections, and this certainly does this. And it's a huge resource for our parents and for our students, and just so appreciate all the work that you have put into this. It's amazing, really is. So thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, under fiscal responsibility, we have Ms. Tracy Robbins, Elementary Director, and Dr. Logan Toon, Assistant Superintendent, and they're going to talk to the, to us about the scoring guide for elementary school boundary studies.
Thank you, President Gerard, Vice President Price, Board Member, Superintendent. It's a pleasure to be here with you in this workshop discussion, hoping that we can have a robust discussion among board members today. I will cue this up briefly, and with your permission, we've also asked Dr. Helene Van Nader, our boundary consultant, to join us at the stand. She will also chime in on this. As we undertook our boundary study from, we did several phases of a large boundary study in the last several months. One of the phases of that boundary study was to determine boundaries for the new school opening in Syracuse. One was to address a critical need at Eagle Bay. Those are completed. Well, the Syracuse one's underway, but they're going forward. The other one was to study schools south of Antelope Drive, a general kind of overview study to determine needs and set a course for what we anticipate is a long-term decline in student enrollment, particularly the elementary student enrollment on the south end of the county. As we concluded that study officially in board meeting last month, we are now looking at how do we set up this discussion in localized individual studies moving forward. One of the things that we became aware of was we needed an empirical, data-based way of assessing needs and communicating those needs to the communities that are affected by boundary studies, in particular, when school closures are on the table for discussion, because that's an intensely emotional and difficult thing for a community to engage in. And so in recognition of the challenge that it puts the board members in, the district administrators who are making these hard recommendations, board members making decisions, community members that are dealing with challenging changes and shifts in their, in their school experiences, we recognize that and want to have kind of some structure wrapped around that. So these two wonderful professionals to my left went to work with our boundary committee and said, "What can we come up with that will serve as a backbone for our study moving forward as we initiate in some localized discussions in the future?" So I will ask these two, Tracy and Dr. Van Nader, to overview briefly the seven criteria in the document, and then you can engage in discussion and questions at that point.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Toon.
So you should have received this in your packet. And so what I'd like to do just quickly, or as an overview, is discuss the seven points that we're going to review and take into consideration as areas that we would look at in looking at a rubric as we identify areas at a local level that we would look at. Now, it's important to state, too, at the top in your first paragraph that you received in your packet, that this one rubric doesn't determine yes or no on what our decision is ultimately going to be. It is one factor that is brought into the decision, and of course, it's going to be a lot of input at the local school levels. So with that, we have seven areas. Our first is condition of the facility, total school enrollment, grade level distribution by enrollment by grade level, enrollment versus the capacity of the building and what they can hold. Those are two different numbers that Nathan will give us. Special programs that are housed in these buildings, which would include our DEEP programs, immersion programs, or our special education hub classrooms, transportation logistics, and then I skipped one, special program outcomes, whether or not we are functioning at a rate comparable to what we expect and hold our outcomes of achievement to in regards to these programs. And at the very bottom, you have the overall scoring guide. You'll also notice in that first paragraph that Dr. Toon has added in some weighted areas that we may, as we meet with the committee, go back and weight a little heavier, depending on what kind of feedback we get at our local school sites and the feedback that community members provide us with. Dr. To, or, sorry, Dr. Van Nader will be part of those discussions moving forward. Now, I'd just like to open it up to you. Do you need clarifying answers on any of those seven areas? And if so, hopefully she and I can answer them for you.
Bridgette, can I?
Sorry, I was just looking for my question that I wrote down. Ms. Powell, you go first.
I was just wondering, so how is this essentially different than kind of what you were looking at before?
We mostly started by just looking at numbers, and then looking at numbers in general clusters of areas. And then we went out to administrators in those areas and asked them for more feedback about their buildings, about their staffing. And we got a lot of good information to kind of know where the hotspots were, but it wasn't something you could put a number to. And so putting a number to it will make it more justifiable, more transparent for everyone to see, "This is how that came up." I had to have split classrooms for three years in a row. I've got, the only way my building is full is because I've got seven additional programs in it. Those kinds of things that you can put on paper to show, because we kind of have a feel where some of those hotspots are and want to come back to you and say, "Well, let's start looking deeper with a rubric at these areas based on that initial feedback." But that was more feelings and a few people's opinions. This will be more data.
Okay, Ms. Price? So who does the scoring? Is it the administrators? Is it the boundary study committee?
It's going to be, so we'll take all of the information in our communication with individual stakeholders at each site, and then the committee will come back and score it, based on that feedback.
So like, the condition of the facility will be done by facility. That won't be us doing it, or a principal saying, "My building's in really bad shape," or one saying, "Mine's just fine." The grade level distribution enrollment will be at least three years of longitudinal data, those kinds of things. If they're in the system, we'll do them. Otherwise, it'll be a person specifically over that program, which may be the principal, but hopefully, somebody else is a little bit more objective and has longitudinal data.
Okay.
So that was part of my question. So will you then, on this scoring rubric, will you then add the data in from the open houses that you do? Well, the open houses would only happen after... At the end, so... After we, after we use these rubrics, we determine this is an area that we really need to study. And then, as you're studying, to start a study, we would first of all, bring that to you that we're going to start a study. Then the first thing to do is to go out to community council meetings and say, "This is what the data is showing us. This is what the rubric's showing." We've already done that at Eagle Bay, Canyon Creek, Stewart's, and Reading, just because of the other study. And we start getting their feedback of, "Yeah, we've got to have more students," or, "No, don't do this, do this." And then we open an email where we can get their feedback. So definitely, and then we start to draw lines if lines need to be drawn. So you're going to present the data...
So, so you're going to present the data and the scoring?
Can I add to that just a little bit to answer that question? So the board's involvement in the boundary study is kind of threefold, fourfold if there's a closure. First, you vote to initiate the study itself. So we don't launch into this process unless the board says, study this area, and we'll make a recommendation for an area that might need to be studied. So then we would go out and do this assessment and collect this data and create a boundary recommendation to the board. And the committee would bring that boundary recommendation to the board, which the board would then preliminarily, preliminarily approve, which we would then take that boundary recommendation out to the committee, out to the school level for public input. That's when we have public hearings and public comment windows and things like that. And then after that second, after that second opportunity to collect information from the schools, we would then bring the, the proposal back with any modifications, and the board would adopt the new boundaries, and that would be the final adoption. The one thing we would add in the case of a school closure is we have to have a public hearing on the site of the location that's being closed. And so that, so kind of four formal engagements that the board's going to have in a boundary change involving a school closure, three formal engagements. This is going to take place between the first and the second engagement. So between the opening of the study, all the data collection boundary recommendation, and then acceptance of the boundary recommendation, which then goes to the public for like, community input cycles before the final approval. Is that right?
Got it. Thank you.
They're going to want to know that data when we go out.
Right, right. And then, then they'll want to make sure that you respond and add to the data their comments that night.
And, and hopefully, these communities, they're going to share information that we're unaware of. We, we need to hear from our communities so that we know areas that they're concerned about that maybe we're not aware of, that, that makes sense to us when we're looking at something, but don't make, it, it doesn't make sense to us internally because we don't live there.
Those first meetings with community councils, to me, it's really important to not go out with any lines drawn. We have planning that could make polygons at any time of how, who, how many kids live in these few blocks or how many of that. But to go out to them with this kind of information, and what we see out of that, what we're driving out of that information and say, would you agree with what we're saying? What else do you see? And, and then go out, or then publish the lines, once they know that that's what we're doing with their input.
Yes, yes. I like that. Okay, Ms. Mercer.
I, I want to articulate this carefully. We recently had the, the farewell to Bountiful Elementary School, which was a beautiful event with generations of families coming to the building and saying goodbye to the former building and, and being excited about the new building. One thing that I'm not seeing in these guidelines that I would, that I would love to see is whether or not our, we're maintaining the sense of community within our school. And, and I know that's a difficult thing to, to delineate with numbers, but one thing that, that is, that is crossing my mind are Sharpe's surveys, dates, Sharpe's survey data on whether or not students feel a sense of community within their school. And is there a way, I, I feel like we, we have a challenge right now, and part of our declining enrollment, especially in, in my area of the district, is due to families not choosing their neighborhood school and, and seeing alternatives to that. And is there a way that we can counteract that, and especially on an elementary school level, to, to keep our students and families in our neighborhood schools because they feel this sense of connection and community to the school that they belong to? And, and I, again, I realize this is a difficult thing to, to, to measure, but I also think it's extremely important while we're looking at reducing, at declining numbers of enrollment, especially on an elementary school level, that, that we are considering how, how, how are these families in these neighborhoods feeling connected to these schools? I, I know Mrs. Stevens and I had a conversation about this, and, and the idea was like, if, if we take out a school and, and that building is available, a charter school's going to pop in there. And, and the neighbors, to, to them, it may not make a difference whether it's a charter school or a district school. They're going to go to that neighborhood school with, without, because it's what's close. And, and so I think we, we really need to figure out a way, and, and I, and I lean on your expertise and your knowledge and experience in this on understanding how our families are connected to our schools and our communities.
When we've closed two schools, closed Washington, closed Fremont, no one at that school wants it to close, so they are connected to that school. But the enrollment still said that that was the right thing to do. I wasn't a district employee as Fremont closed, but as Washington closed, the difference that happened, the, the big thing that happened was the five receiving schools had a big open house. They gave out T-shirts. They did things to draw those people in. And we really, and, and, and we took care of all the staff. And I think that it's that difference. It's, everyone loves their community school. They don't maybe love the one down the street because it's theirs that they know. So you would never find a rubric, you might find some people that say, I don't really like my school. But overall, in any school, you're going to say, I love my school. I want to stay here.
And I, and I guess, and, and I feel for that definitely in terms of like, when we're looking at a number and saying that this school doesn't carry the numbers that it has, but maybe we've drawn the lines in such a way. I, I spent a lot of time canvassing over the last year, and I found that the schools where it was within walking distance, there, there was a lot more dedication to that neighborhood school. So, so are there ways that we can draw the boundaries, not to decide necessarily which school we keep and which key school we open, but where we send those families within those boundaries? If, if that makes sense, the difference between an opening and a closure and, and the question of where those boundaries are and in, in regards of trying to keep people as close to home as possible and trying to keep, and, and I realize there's so many other factors involved there, but I, I would like to see added to this rubric some way that we can delineate that, that, that maintaining that sense of community is important in terms of not only just making people happy, but us maintaining the, the student population that we need to, to keep our schools open. I, I don't know if there's, if you understand the difference there that I'm saying.
No, I do appreciate your question. I, I do, I do see some, what you're trying to get at. I absolutely do. One point I want to make, which is a little bit different than Helene's, is being close to a school is very important. So when we moved, as an example, when we moved students out of Sand Springs into our brand-new school, Sunburst, they did not want to go because they loved their community school. They could walk to their community school. They've been at, had all of their students go through Sand Springs, and they did not want to go to a brand-new school. Then we took this neighborhood, three of them actually, that were in kind of strange areas, and we bussed them past Sand Springs to Sunburst. They were mad. They've been there for five years now. That same group now has to go back to Sand Springs. They don't want to go back. So it doesn't, I think it's, it's the community, and I, it speaks to what Dr. Van Nader is saying. The community and the culture of belonging is created by the school in which you attend. And these students that didn't want to leave Sand Springs loved Sand Springs. When they went to Sunburst, they fell in love with Sunburst, so much so that they didn't even want to go back, even though they could walk. And they were bussed to Sunburst. So I, I think it's, I, I'm just going to say that.
And I'll add to this too, and I think the, I'll say this maybe not, not facetiously, seriously. I have one word on this document that's my favorite word on the whole document, and it's the watermark. The bottom line is, the bottom line is, we haven't implemented this rubric yet. And we're going to implement it, and we're going to say, hey, we haven't thought about that, and we haven't thought about that. And maybe if we word it this way, that's, that's one thing. I, I'm intrigued by the idea that Board Member Mercer shared about the idea of out-of-boundary enrolled students. And I think that came to light a little bit when we started talking about special populations, special groups of students that come in, in magnet programs. Sometimes we have a neighborhood, we might have a neighborhood where a certain region of the community is purposefully magneting to another area, and that should be a, a weighty consideration in thinking about how we draw those lines. We might have a region that's receiving a lot of students from out of boundary, either in a special program enrollment or just through the variance process. And I think that maybe could get to the heart of that culture element without trying to say, let's rank the schools in the order from the best culture to the, to the least. And that, that's a tricky slope to get on. We, we kind of crept into the space of academic achievement in Section Six and somewhat awkwardly because it's, because a student's ability to achieve at grade level, how does that weigh into like, whether you close or move, right? That's a concern that we address as a system, but it doesn't really say, therefore, we should make you go to the school down the street or the school next door. So, so the, the notion of culture might be in that same kind of, we might nest it within one of these other categories if it comes to light as a, as a distinguishing characteristic among schools that really clarifies, how do we take these boundaries and draw them in a way that makes sense for the neighborhood? But for sure, I like the idea of saying not just current school enrollment, but potential school enrollment, given geographical boundaries.
Yes, and I-
Because kids kind of tend to variance all over the place.
And maybe if there is a, a magnet or a special program that would draw families back in that are being drawn out by other, other options, like, is there something we could do in areas where there is a potential enrollment that is significantly higher than our current enrollment that, that, that we could do something as, as a district to, to, to show that we're, we're noticing that missing population that, that is, that, and I don't, I don't know if we have records of that, like, do we, census data? I, I don't know what, what that-
We, we know where the students live and which geographical boundary that address is in, and we know which school they attend, so-
So even if they're not at a district school?
If they're not in a Davis School District school, we only know that they, their address pertains to the school district from the state board. We don't have a, a local address to that. So, but those numbers are, are far fewer than our internal county students who are into other schools. Charter school enrollment is probably the big X-factor in that in terms of a student who lives in a community who's choosing to enroll in a charter school, we would lose that student's enrollment and not have access to that data. But we, we do have an understanding of which students should, based on address alone, have enrolled. If they would have chosen their neighborhood school, they would be with us, is the best way to say that, I think.
Okay, Ms. Stevens?
Yeah, just along those same lines, have thought a lot about this. And along those same lines, I had written down possible slash potential future growth in communities so that we don't have 10 years down the road, a problem of now, where do we put these kids?
That is definitely one of the, the things that planning does, is they meet with each city and see where the potential growth is. Cities can't predict it much more than five years out, but there are several cities in our county now that can say, we're built out. Or the most that could go right here is, is 30. And then you get places in the northwest where there's still a bunch of land that isn't for sale, and so the potential exists there. We feel like we do really well if we have a boundary study that will last three to five years, hopefully five. You know, the, the recent, the recent thing that we're dealing with right now at Island View is all the kids that came back from a charter that we didn't know were, were coming. And the growth there picked up faster than the growth anywhere else. And so that was, that's the first one I know of in, in 30 years that didn't last five years. You know, at least the one at Sand Springs lasted the five years. And so you, you do the best you can with your crystal ball, but for instance, as, as we are looking at some of these schools in the, in the South, there's some potential for growth, but the birth rate is declining faster than the potential for growth. So we do know that we have a long-term problem, and we wouldn't bring to you a solution that's only going to work for two or three years. If it's only going to work for two or three years, we're better off to do nothing and do something in three or four years when the, and I'll give the example of Washington Elementary. For more than 10 years before Washington closed, it was under-enrolled. I mean, we looked at it, we looked at it, we looked at it. But the first time we looked at it really seriously, and it was before all the rules of how you do it and how open it is, we could have moved everyone to the five schools around it, but that would have overfilled those schools, and so you would have had to move people out of those schools to the next one. And that ripple effect didn't feel smart. It didn't feel like that we were getting a big enough bank, so we left it alone. By the time we did it, we were able to just move it into those five schools. And now, all of those five schools are under-enrolled. So it definitely needed to happen. And, and so that's what we're trying to do, is project it long, far enough out, so we won't be bringing back a recommendation to you that we don't think will last five years.
And I think along those lines, like what Ms. Mercer said though about the potential students, not necessarily birth rate students, like the declining birth rate, but also the ones, ones that we have that could potentially come back, because we've seen numbers in board meeting that in 2020, they significantly dropped. And we're still kind of not having the full birth population in public education, but that, that could potentially change over time.
I think one of the things, and this is, this is just me looking at it for over lots of years. We used to get about 95% of the birth rate that entered our schools. Don't know where the other five went. And now that's dropped by about 15%. But that was before online school was available. It's before any charters were available. There, there's just more options for people, and, and homeschooling was hard, and now it's, now it's easy, and there's so many things for them. And so to only lose 15% of that when there are all these other options for them, to me, doesn't feel like a failure of Davis School District. It, you know, you'd love to have those 15% back, but there are all these other options. And some of the options, some of the monitories after, offer before and after-school programs that, that we can't offer. Some of them offer just a special focus on the arts that we don't offer. But I feel like our robust program is, is, offers a lot more than they do. But, but to think that we're going to get all 15 of that percent back with all the options that exist now, as long as they have those options, I don't know that that's realistic. But definitely, we want to be attractive. I know the principals are challenged to advertise their schools, have their special programs. Don't just assume everybody knows, but to let them out. So that's the biggest way to change that, is to sell yourself. We have fantastic schools with wonderful things going on, and we saw that in the Sunburst-Sand Springs things, that people that didn't want to leave Sunburst is because we had this, and we had this, and we had this. And then we went to the Sand Springs Open House. They had all three of them. They had the play, they had it. It's just that people didn't know. They loved their school. So I, I know we'll run into that if we decide to move any boundaries, and especially if we decide to close schools, that people are going to feel disfranchised. But we trust our administrators in our schools to make the receiving place fantastic.
And I think in those instances also, though, they still have the option of attending that school. Whereas when we talk about closing a school, I feel like it does have a bigger impact on the community at large and their perception of Davis School District. And I think we need to be extra careful in that in understanding the value to community that that school provides.
Oh, I agree, but you, you also have to weigh that against, is the only way, for instance, at Fremont, is the only way to have your children be in a split classroom every single year. And that's why this rubric will become so important. I don't think parents are aware of the challenge. They, well, they are if they're, if they end up with a cohort that, that children can never get out of, and they can't divide. Those are some of the academic impacts that happen. And so, yes, it's more convenient if that school's across the street from me. But is more convenient worth it when, like, for instance, at Washington, their first grades were 17 the year we closed? And that sounds great, but their sixth grade was 37, because that was the only way they could balance it. So, so it is looking at all those things, and that's why principals will help with this.
And just one more note with that, though. I feel like, at least in my community, it's a lot of multi-generational families that have attended the same school, like we saw with Bountiful Elementary's Open House. And the parents, or the grandparents, don't necessarily know what's happening at the school. And when they see a school in their community close, then they have a negative view of the school district that they will tell their children, well, maybe you should do something different with my grandchildren instead of having them bussed to a different school. Why are they doing that? That's why I think we have to maybe even look at a larger picture of the community, just because, and maybe that is, we have an open house that is sent through a city notification or something that we inform all of those people.
Ms. Stevens, I think that you've made some valid points. Also, Ms. Mercer, a couple of things I wanted to pull out. I, I love the idea of getting a little bit more of a stakeholder input on where they belong in terms of trying intentionally, and I think we can do that with our communications department, reaching out to those families that have left the school for whatever reason. Communications, when we do our open house, they go everywhere. They, they go to laundromats in the area. They go to convenience stores. They go to city offices. We want to hear from families. This is such a draft document that I think pulling out also, that in number two, you'll notice this total school enrollment, both the current- notice this total school enrollment, both the current enrollment, but also projected for three to five years, so that families can say, oh, they've looked at the current enrollment and what's been coming, let's look at the future and predict out the best that we can for three to five years, and be responsive to that. So I think we can definitely make some modifications. Logan's here taking copious notes for us. Yes, please.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. One thought that's fascinating to me is this idea of like recapturing student enrollment for those students that have left, and that is, that's like, that would be excellent if we could figure that out. And I think maybe in our whole conversation process, this, all the numbers that we look at here, I think some of the headings even say projected enrollment, but it could even say, we could even undertake an administrative effort in advance of some of these recommendations to say, and here's what we've done to recapture, and we haven't seen the recapture that we thought we would. That we're intentional about that. We say, we know there are kids living here, and they're choosing some other option, and here's what we've done to try and give them every opportunity to return to their community neighborhood school here. And that thought is interesting. I don't know exactly, I don't have a thought on how that would exactly fit into the rubric, but in terms of our administrative process in advance of these difficult recommendations and decisions that we need to make, that's fascinating.
Okay. I wanted to add a comment, and then Ms. Price has another comment. This has been a great discussion, and appreciate all the comments. And I did just want to make this comment, and then we'll have Ms. Price, and then we'll wrap up, but many, having been through this, many of these issues that have been brought up have been taken into consideration by your team, and there's so much that goes into this and so many considerations, and I think you've done a great job of doing that. And, but I love the new ideas and new considerations that you guys are writing down and can incorporate in here, and just, we'll have Ms. Price's comment, and then we'll follow up.
But, okay, I just want to say, I really like that we have this rubric. My first year as a board member is when we did the boundary study for the northwest part of the school district, and that's my community. And there was one school in particular, you'll probably remember this, Helene, where they were really, really upset about the proposed changes. And I would look at the map, and I'm like, this just doesn't make sense, like, why aren't we drawing the boundary here? This, and then after talking to Helene, and then Nathan, and Steve Snow, and understanding the, I guess, all of the analysis that goes into it, at the end of the day, you still have to draw a line, and people are still going to be unhappy. But I appreciate this rubric, that we know that we're taking even more data into consideration when we're making a decision. So, I don't know, I guess I just wanted to share that, just because I have just what I've experienced in my own community. And, you know, I had people like, you're splitting up my neighborhood, you're, why are we doing this? And I think that you guys have done a really good job explaining the why, but it's still really complicated, and like I said, they're still going, like, you can't please everybody. And at first, that was maybe kind of a hard thing to, a hard pill to swallow, but then we do, we just have to make, we have to be fiscally responsible when it comes down to it, like at the end of the day. But, so thank you. I really do like that you're trying to get more information as we make these decisions.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Yeah, just want to say thank you so much. I agree that I love having this rubric and the data. And of course, they're always going to be emotional, but if we have this hard data and, you know, add the emotions into it and the culture and these kinds of things that we've talked about, it will help us make better decisions, and it will also enable us to be able to show our community members and the parents, look at this data, because it is, you guys are mired in it. But us as board members, or even the general public, or even parents sometimes, it's hard to see the big picture that you guys are seeing. So if you have the rubric and the data, this is solid information that people can make sense of, you know, and it's hard to separate the emotion from the data, but it will be helpful that they can do that when they have that data in front of them. So I love the idea of having the rubric to help us make these hard decisions. So thank you so much.
Thank you, President Gerard.
Ms. Van Natter, and Dr. Van Natter, and Dr. Toon, and Ms. Robbins. Appreciate all the work that you've put into this, this is outstanding idea.
Yes, thank you so much.
Yes. Thank you. And having come to the end of our agenda, our meeting will be adjourned. Thank you for being here.